Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 26th. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School Board. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12th regular meeting?
Second.
Any questions or changes? All those in favor? And can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2019 special meeting?
Second.
Any amendments, changes? Okay, all those in favor? That motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment.
I asked that you guys project this way because there's hope for change.
I will try. You know, you know you can never hear me. You know you can never hear me. I will do my best. I don't know how to be louder, but I will try.
Turn that off. I don't think it's cold enough that we need...
It's not.
Oh, is it the vents? It's not.
It's the UNIVEN.
It's the UNIVEN.
Oh, well.
Soon as I'm getting fresh air, it will stop.
All right. Moving on to reports and discussions, the first thing, we want to recognize the varsity boys soccer team as a New York State Class C championships. So they do, there is going to be a formal recognition ceremony on December 18?
18. 6:30 PM, excuse me, in the auditorium. Diane Lyons and a number of other dignitaries have been, well, she is a dignitary, have been invited to say a few words, five minutes or less.
I said it would be lasting five minutes.
That would be just fine, in order to recognize the accomplishment of our state championship team this year.
But we just want to take the opportunity tonight to not let the moment pass. The boys soccer team had a record of 21-0 and 1. And they were just, I just saw the Poughkeepsie Journal did their top 10 teams all through the season, and they did their final fall rankings, and Rhinebeck is the number one team for them. It's a wonderful accomplishment. They had a great season. And we just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that tonight.
And mark your calendars for December 18.
Mark your calendars to be there.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. It should be in the auditorium.
6:30 PM.
Should be a nice celebration of the teams.
With Diane and the rest of the dignitaries.
Please say, "Hey." No pressure, Joe.
No, not at all.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the superintendent's search process. We have a report from our consultants, Strategic Education Advantage. So I'm not sure who's Mike, are you? I'm not sure who's speaking. It's both of you, all of you? All right.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Michael Kuchar. I'm one of three consultants from Strategic Educational Advantage. We're very thrilled and fortunate to be selected by the Board of Education to conduct the next search for the superintendent of Rhinebeck Central School District. I say we're fortunate because by your own mission statement, the Rhinebeck Central Schools puts children first. And I want to be very careful, so I'll read directly from your mission statement. And that is, I quote, "Rhinebeck Central School District is dedicated to nurturing every student's generosity of spirit, passion for learning, and success. Our firm, Strategic Education Advantage, believes that the Board of Education's most important job is to hire and evaluate the superintendents of schools. My colleagues and I, we look forward to working with the Board of Education and the entire community to have a thorough process where the entire community will have voice into the process. We also want to be clear, we know that it's the regulation and the duty of the Board of Education to select. And in working with the Rhinebeck Board of Ed, we really appreciate that they are inclusive process into the community. So we'll be going through and creating community forums. We'll have focus groups. We'll have searches. And by doing this, we'll be developing a profile to make sure that we can make the best fit for the Rhinebeck Central School District. With me and my two colleagues, Dr. Frank Oriama, who is the retired superintendent of Pearl River, New York, one of the first school districts in the country to receive the Malcolm Baldrige Award. Frank also teaches doctoral students multivariate statistics and directed research. Also with is my other colleague, Dr. Bill LaRara, who lives in nearby Sogedes, New York. He's been an educator for over 50 years, has been superintendent in numerous districts, and has also been the commissioner of education for the state in New Jersey. I'm going to have Dr. Oriama talk to you about the search process, and Dr. Oriama will summarize.
Good evening, everyone. Again, a pleasure to be here this evening. As Dr. Kuchar just mentioned, it's a multi-step process, and the cornerstone of the process centers around creating a profile. What should this superintendent look like? So the overall process involves the planning stage, which is obviously where we are now. Creating the profile, and I'm going to talk in great detail about how to do that. The Board, basically having their input in the process and making the final approval, we make it very clear, we are not selecting the superintendent. We are here strictly in an advisory capacity and here to assist the Board in their incredibly important task of appointing the superintendent. The Board then approves the profile. We assist in the creating of advertisements council in terms of where to put those ads, obviously. We then do probably our most important task, and that is to screen candidates. And it's a task that we take very seriously. We do it in a very intensive way. There are some people who we screen, and we think there may be more potential there than we initially see. We'll bring them back again, have a second round with them. And then ultimately, we're looking to bring somewhere between six and eight people who fit the profile, the team lead one, forward to the Board. Every once in a while, we'll wind up with a group of 10. Doesn't happen often, but it does happen. And then after that, we turn the process ostensibly over to the Board and turns up there. So we can assist the Board there in terms of what we think to be really focused scenario-type questions that the concourse is a candidate to pick outside the box and go. Let me go back to what I said earlier about the profile. The profile is basically culled from the results we receive from interviews with the Board of Education, with focus groups that really span the entire community. Because this is going to be a superintendent for all segments of the community. People with kids in school, the people who don't yet have children in school, people who had kids and no longer have kids in school because they graduated and gone on to other good things, and a superintendent for the children, because they're always in a role. So we're looking for somebody who's going to fill all of those needs. And you do that by having conversations with all of those people, including our students, to get a sense of what are the characteristics you would like to see in a new superintendent. In addition, we have a survey that asks the same kinds of questions. And we craft that survey very carefully. We grade input from the Board. The Board has already given us some input in terms of questions that we suggest. And they've replaced them with some questions that they would like to see, is which is what most Boards do. So now that survey goes out and asks about 10 to 12 questions, but more importantly, goes back to a basic three. What are the strengths of the district? What are the areas in need of improvement? And what are the characteristics you would like to see in a new superintendent? So that kind of gets us back to where we are with the profile, and from there, everything else rolls out. We've had a good deal of experience. I'd be less than candid if I didn't say we've had, I think, wonderful successes. And just the time that we've spent in the district, which has not been too long at this point, will be much longer by the time the process is over, for sure. But we see some really wonderful things. And our task is to try to go out there and communicate with people with regard to what a great job we think this is. And Mike puts it well, Michael Kuchar puts it well, we are skin in the game. And the skin we have in the game is that we promise every community, if the person is not successful, we'll do the search again for free. So they need to be solidly successful for two years. And if not, we'll come back and do it again. And the greatest issue for us is not just that we have to do it again, but we want somebody to really be successful. We're all longtime, safe to say, very successful superintendents. We know how tough the job is, but we know how important it is. So to kind of sum up all of it, let me turn it back over to Dr. Oriama.
Thank you. And it's good to be with you. I have a script here that I will read to, and then I have some other remarks that I think are important for me and for us to talk about. Please know that the profile of the candidates drives all that we did, from selecting applicants to developing questions and selection activities, and of course, selecting the final candidate. It is all aligned with the profile of the candidates. Now, as far as that is concerned, in order to do this work the way it needs to be done, is that three of us will invest a lot of time in terms of the people that we meet. And it will not simply be one meeting, or one piece of paper, or one resume. Because in order for this process to work though, you have to know very well who the people are in terms of their work. And track records are really important in this, so that you can see what those people have done. Because that's a very critical matter. And it's also fundamental to what we will do. When we have talked to all of the people and have examined all of the documents that they have, we can then get to a point where we think that what it is that we will find is very close, if not close, to what it is that's important to you. And that's why this process does require a lot of time on your part to be talking to them about the characteristics. You certainly don't want to interview 25 people. You want to find the group of people who are closest to the things that you value and the things that you know you will need to have this very fine district continue to perform and to continue to go in the directions that you want. So please find one or more of the many opportunities available for you to provide critically important input into the process, which is, of course, your side of this, the kind that you will talk with one another about to get to the point that you don't have nine different perspectives, but you have a general agreement about the things that are really important. And that is something that we will assist with that to the degree that we can. But to the degree that you have a pretty good idea of the things that are important for you as a Board, for the district as you go forward. The Rhinebeck Board of Education has made it clear that we will have a transparent process. Know that the search must remain confidential. We talked about that. We want to do as much as possible in terms of the structure of this process that we would do with you. The exception to that is the confidentiality, and that still remains the confidentiality. Because if it is not confidential, you will lose candidates. And we don't want that, and you don't want that. That's not in your best interest, the community's best interest, and the candidates'. If we were to keep the best candidates in consideration, their names cannot be made public until they are finalized. Therefore, we feel it is important to state upfront the difference of transparency when it comes to confidentiality, which is that point that I just understood. It is done with the best of intentions for the purest of reasons. So in summary, check the website for dates and information. Fill out the online survey for input into the superintendent's search, and encourage others to do so. Together with you and your Board of Education, Strategic Educational Advantage is confident to fit the right person to lead Rhinebeck Central Schools in the next decade. I'd like to just add a couple of things about this afternoon. I had the good fortune of having five meetings with people from your community. And there is no substitute for that, because you get this opportunity to ask these three questions that you know you're losing. But I was very impressed with the people that I met, how diligent they were, how attentive they were, and also how many things they breathe upon, and the way that they do that. And I think there is no substitute for having that kind of contact with people. To listen to what they said and how they think about these things, that helps us in all kinds of ways. I have learned things this afternoon that I never knew, and I've lived across the river, not too far away, for 20 years. And I've been to this community more than a few times. But there were things that I learned today that I never did. And there will be more things that we will learn. And that's what we have to do. We all have to work very hard to use the process of what happens when a group of people work carefully about the things that are important. And when it comes to the times that things are important, you can do things that will last for hours and pages. That's not going to do this. It has to get to a point that it's very clear, these are the things that matter most. Frank said, and Mike said, and I'll say, we are very, very confident in this process because of what we already know. In the smallest amount of time that we've had, there will be more there. And we are very confident about what we think will be the best for your community, for your teachers, for your parents, and for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the consultants, all that are here? Anything anybody wants to know? No? Okay. Information is going, is it on the website already?
It will be before you put your head on the pillow tonight.
So information's going up on the website. The process, as they've laid out, the timeline that we look at, is going to be on there. And then we'll continue to update the website with information as we have it. And we'll be setting the dates for the next set of focus groups and community forums very shortly. Well, thank you all for being here. I appreciate it.
A pleasure to do it. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right.
Just thank Whitney as well for all the work she did, getting all this set up on such a short notice. I really appreciate it.
Just going to get to that next.
Sorry.
Yes, thank you, Whitney. With short notice, and she arranged everything. We appreciate that. Thank you. And Joe, I was going to also thank Joe. Joe helped arrange things too.
Yeah, I'm Whitney's assistant, so it's my... It's my pleasure to do that.
All right. So now we have our annual academic achievement report. Mr. Marvin Kreps. Is it what we have in our packet, Marvin, or should I?
It is.
Okay. See it here better than there looking at it.
You guys want to look at that? Want me to just talk you through it? You've got it right there in front of you, so whatever your pleasure is.
Well, if you don't get to near the microphone, it will be down to the floor.
It may be there.
Oh, right. For the folks at home.
You want to move it over, or are you talking here?
I'd like to wear a...
I feel bad. You guys have a crazy neck.
I'd love it. I'd love it from the teachers.
Okay. This is a lot?
Doesn't amplify.
I'm going to quiet your voice. It's just recording.
Marvin, how long have you been there?
20 minutes. Have you been here tonight, or have you been here since? I've been on since very early.
He's always going to adjust the light.
Except if I say anything crazy. Okay, so this is not the annual presentation, because I already did it over the summer. This is just a follow-up from that, because you'll recall, the 3-8 testing wasn't done yet, so that's pretty much it. And then at the curriculum meeting, we decided, just for the good of the order, I should review the Elementary-Secondary Education Act accountability status, because we're under a new set of rules that are sort of holding schools accountable. So I thought I'd run through this. So this shouldn't be law, so I'll share now. Okay, so you can see the 18-19 results. And again, especially, this is 3-8 ELA. You can see that I have some retrospective looks in, going back to 13-14. And that's grades 3 through 8, top to bottom. You can see in the 18-19, you know, scores on average. These are kids, this is basically what I would describe as the pass rate or proficiency rates for those tests. So it's 58, 56, 50, 56, 40, 47. On average, that's running about 52, 53 percent across the 3-8. That number holds pretty consistently all the way back. It hasn't changed much. It started to go up around 15, 16, and it's kind of held constant. There's a lot to say about these tests that changed several times over the course of that time period right there. The state shifted the standards a couple of times. They shifted again, as a matter of fact, and moved to a new set of standards. The refusal rate has sort of stayed kind of constant. This time around, I want to say, across the grade levels, we had about 60 kids not participate in the non-tested, concentrated mostly in grades 4 through, I think it was 4, 5, and 6. So we had double-digit refusals in 4, 5, and 6, and then we had single-digit in 3, 7, and 8, something like that. So a lot accounts for what those numbers are. But I would just say generally, that's kind of what we see at the 3-8 level in ELA. Same with math. You know, the score's kind of migrated slightly up in the elementary school, you know, 3, 4, 5. You can see 65, 57, 50, 57, 50, 43. Same thing, though, it's like in the mid-50s on average. And again, around 15, 16, it's starting to come up. We'll see how it goes, because again, we're going to migrate into a new set of standards in the area of mathematics as well. Outdoor grades were about the same across the 6-grade levels for that as well. You can see that for science, 4 and 8, kind of ran about the same. 18, 19 is 95 percent of the kids passed the science 4. 89 percent of the kids in the science 8 passed. That number dropped a little bit, because what we've done is rolled over our 6, 7, and 8 science program to the next-generation science standards, a little ahead of the state, because the state's going to roll out a new test package in grades 5 and 8 soon, I think starting maybe next year. So we'll see some change in there. But we account for some of that little bit of a drop from last year, because we kind of moved to those other standards, and the kids were still taking the same test. So, but again, I'm just knowledgeable in terms of the difference. So you can see across the board, that number has stayed pretty much the same for, as far back as I keep track of it. So 8 is about the same, though. See it runs across the top there. It's been running in the 90s, high 80s since we started giving that test. So the kids are pretty successful on it. Pretty optimistic about how the kids are going to do on the next-gen standards as we roll over to those standards as well. So one of the reasons why I must either duck the worker, it's so sensitive, I can't even... So 18, 19, if you look down there, the reason I just bring these back, I presented this over the summer, but I think it's worth noting. You know, the same kids that are across the board in 3-8 testing in math in ELA, who are, you know, 50, 55 percent of them passing those tests, when they get to high school and they take Common Core Algebra 1, 97 percent of those kids pass. 98 percent of the kids who took the Algebra 2 pass. 500 percent of the kids who took the Geometry pass, and so on and so forth. So it's a pretty standard pattern here. It's like so durable, the pattern, that it's just the story. It's the way it works around here. And most of that is attributed towards to the fact that those tests, sort of 3-8, are used for formative purposes. We don't put a lot of emphasis on kids doing really well on those tests. We refer to, kind of systematically, provide services to them. So we use that material throughout the course of their schooling in 3-8 for purposes of getting like AIS services or any kind of support that they might need, with the idea that we're more interested in how they're doing long-term as they go into high school. You can see that that strategy has served us pretty well over the years and continues to do so. And again, the data back five, even 10 years kind of supports that contention. So you can kind of see across the board, the ELA math results kind of run across in the mid-to-low, sometimes high 90s in math in ELA. There we go. So you can, the SAT scores over this new summer, but on average, they run higher than the state and national average across critical reading and writing, as well as mathematics. So, you know, generally speaking, the program, if you start looking at the summative data that we bring in, shows that, you know, kids are doing just fine. I had a mom came up to me the other day, this is an anecdote that I like to spice around. I like telling the story, that if they had a daughter go in and take the SATs just to see how she'd do, and she scored 1570 the first time, she's not going to take it.
That's 1570 out of what total scores?
16. Yeah, just to say that. I like to say all that, too, just because we help educate. So you can see that part of what our summative results show us is that the AP exam results in 2019, again, we went over this in the summer, but it just shows you, we had 196 grades across all of those different examinations. So like you always have to put the 3-8 in the context of, these are the same kids that went through that system and were part of that, and ended up in high school and take these exams and score quite a lot of AP exams. So you can see our grad rate runs about 94 percent, 95 percent. It kind of runs around there. Flux, which is a little bit, not a lot. Our two-and-four-year college attendance rate, right around 90 to 95 percent on a regular basis. So, you know, just to talk out loud about how the district does sort of comparatively. You know, Rhinebeck High School is one of the, you know, best high schools by measurements that the US News and World Report does. You know, we're like 11, 91 out of 20,000 schools, so we're in the top 6 percent. We're like ranked 102 out of 287. That puts us in the top 8 percent of the New York State high schools. Wapo had us as one of the most challenging high schools. You know, our SAT scores, like I mentioned, four-year cohort grad rate of 94, college attendance rate around 90, and then the AP exams. So, you know, the sum and substance of our current accountability status is that Rhinebeck High School is in, because it's in the top 25 consecutive years, by the way, it was a recognition, you know, it was one out of 234 high schools in the state of New York who got that award for that year. And Buckley Middle School is still a good standing in the state. So that's sort of the picture. If you look at the way we're now being held accountable, it's these seven criteria that you see on that slide in front of you there. So again, I'm not going to belabor it too much other than to say, you know, academic achievement is a sort of composite index of ELA, math, and science. And for high schools, they also roll in the social studies scores into that. Student growth is based on kind of how kids do year to year to... Student growth is based on kind of how kids do year to year to comparative sample, and the state kind of compares how those kids are doing. Academic progress is based on a metric that the state uses toward a hundred percent proficiency. They create like five-year long-term goals, and they set one-year measures of interim progress, they call MIPs. So how you do on your MIPs is how you do for your academic progress. So I like to say, if you get enough chits, you hit your MIP. So we work really hard to make sure we get enough chits. Your graduation rate now, they used to just do four-year cohort, now they're doing four, five, and six, and putting that into the accountability. Same thing, we're doing long-term goals against a hundred percent graduation, and then they have measures of interim progress that they measure the districts against. Then they have English language proficiency metrics they use that's based on how the English language learners or the English as a second language kids, they take the nicest slot and they use those resulting scores to hold districts accountable. Chronic absenteeism is a new metric that's shown up now on school report cards, and that basically, they want you to hit ninety percent of your possible aggregate attendance. If you fall below that, then you end up getting less points on your measures of interim progress, and so then you show up on accountability list. And then college and career and civic readiness now, which is a new metric, that's sort of a complicated, it would take a long time to explain, but I can kind of boil it down. They kind of throw in what kind of diplomas you give out. So do you give out regular diplomas, regents diplomas, regents with honors? How many AP exams do kids take? Do you have kids who get CTE credits? Things of that nature. And then those things count more or less on your OLL score, and then they make a determination as to your college and career civic readiness. And the same thing, they set long-term goals, and then they give you measures of interim progress. Each one of those seven is rated one to four. So you get a rating of one to four, four being the highest, one being the lowest. Okay, so here's how we kind of stack up on that. Our current standing in this metric, the set of metrics I just talked about, is that the district is in good standing, the high school is in good standing, the elementary school is in good standing, and the middle school is in good standing. And you can see across that top in the purple, you'll see that those are the what are called subgroups that we get measured against. So you can see we get measured for our all-stud population, that means all students, and then students with disabilities, Native American, Asian, Black, Hispanic, white, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, and all the racial. So what they do is they break down every single one of those against all seven of those and rank each one of those one to four. And so then you get a subgroup measurement. You can imagine what this honking spreadsheet looks like when I get it from a study. It's pretty complicated for all kinds of data. So I'm boiling it down for you, but it's exactly what I just said. So I can show you kind of overall breaking down kind of what our scores were in those seven areas. So you can see, as I mentioned, across the three schools, we're in good standing. With regard to academic achievement, we're three, three, and four respectively, elementary, middle, and high. You're going to kind of see that pattern that I referred to before. With regard to growth, we are two in the elementary school, which I'll talk about in a second, and we were three in the middle school, and you don't get a growth score for the high school because it's only based on the four through eight math in ELA test. Academic progress, you'll see, we got three, three, and then we got four in the high school. The N size for, well, of course, the graduation rate, we got four because of the high graduation rate. And of course, we don't have any graduates from high school yet from the elementary school. I suppose some of them might, but no chance. English language learners, that N size is too small to show on a chart, so we don't show that. And then chronic absenteeism, you'll see, and this is just to note this, you'll see that in Chancellor, that scored at the top at a four, and then Buckley Middle School was a three, and Rydick High School was a three. And then college and career readiness, same thing with the graduation rate. It's based on your outcomes at the end, and you'll see that that got scored as four. So if you kind of go across to Rydick High School and kind of look down, you'll see that the Rydick High School scores, the top scores from top to bottom against the metrics. So areas to be kind of concerned about that are buried in there, because this is kind of the thing that, the way this new system is set up, and this is where the monitoring is going to come from for us over time, is that, as I mentioned, they take those subgroups I talked about, and they score each one of them on all seven of those metrics. So what I did was I kind of went in and found the areas where I think the issues are, where twos and ones showed up for subpopulations. So you'll see in Chancellor, under student academic achievement, the Hispanic kids scored a two. Under student growth, you'll see that the white kids scored a two, students with disabilities scored one, economically disadvantaged scored a two, and then overall, that caused that all-student population to be a two. So that's something to pay attention to, and we'll be taking a look at that pretty closely actually as time goes on. And then you'll see in academic progress, same thing is true with Hispanic against students with disabilities. So there's something that we need to really kind of burrow in a little bit with those kids who are English language learners to see what's going on. I suspect they're finding these tests in English challenging because even though they just, even though they take the nicest slot, they would be getting ESL, for example, English as a second language, they would still take the test in English, and so my guess is that that would put some downward pressure on their scores. And with regard to the students with disabilities, most of those kids end up with IEPs because they were tested and it was determined that they were behind, so we'd be a little surprised to find out that all of a sudden when they took a state test, they did fine when we know that they're struggling to meet grade level standards already, and that's what makes them eligible for an IEP and rights under the Committee on Special Education. You can see that with Buckley Middle School, same thing. We're seeing this pattern now with Hispanic kids, and then students with disabilities in the middle school, students with disabilities for student academic progress, and also achievement. And then economically disadvantaged shows up again. And then if you move farther over, you'll see that chronic absenteeism starts to show up at Buckley Middle School for white kids, students with disability, and economically disadvantaged. If you drop right below that, you'll see that chronic absenteeism for white kids, students with disability, and economically disadvantaged kids scored a one also. And they got in below ninety percent, I believe it was around eighty-seven percent, which caused them to fall into that lower range. So that's something to monitor, but again, it's a subpopulation, and you can see, if you go back over to our overall metrics, our overall metrics are fine. So what these sub-metrics are for is to kind of say, it's like the canary in the coal mine phenomenon, you want to take a look at those, monitor those kids, kind of put some things in place to try to get a better sense of what's going on with those kids, and perhaps if we can do something about it, we'll do so. This is kind of the first time out with this stuff, so we're now just getting our heads around what they mean by all this, and then what kinds of remedial things we could put in place to support that, or perhaps proactive things we could put in place to help kids be a little more successful. So that is all the fill-in I had because I covered a whole bunch of other stuff over the summer. Okay?
I have a couple of questions. So this last slide on this accountability areas of concern.
Yeah.
What generates those numbers? Is it test scores? Is it? I'm not sure I follow what these numbers are coming from.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, so let me go back here. This is the easiest way to get that, to get at that. There it is. Okay, so see those seven things down left? So each one of those tiles matches up to what's described on the right. So student achievement at the top in the gray, that is a composite index based on how kids do on English language arts, math, and science, grades three through eight, but then also in the high school, they add social studies. So that's what they do is they calculate how kids do on the tests, and then they, you might recall back in old days, we used to have kids get level one, level two, level three, level four, so then they take your level threes and fours, and they create a performance index. And then they stat rank that performance index, level one, level two, level three, level four. So they kind of do two iterations of the stat ranking against one, two, three, and four, and then they then decide, okay, this is what the whole population's like, and then they do that same thing for each one of those subgroups. That's how they generate that number.
I'm not sure.
Like, when I say that out loud, I was like, who read that out loud? I'm just telling you that is what it is. I hope I have, I'm sorry, sound you out.
A follow-up question on that. So I see, for example, the student academic achievement is just looking at the performance for that one year within the group, and the student growth is comparing to previous years, the scores, previous years here in this school. The first one is comparing to elsewhere in the state presumably, right?
Yes.
And then academic progress is measuring against long-term goals and measures of interim progress. Who sets those long-term goals and measures of interim progress? Is that state set, or is that us?
State education. And it's calculated to move toward, you might remember in the NCLB years, the No Child Left Behind Act years that started back in '02, they had this plan that every school district in the state of New York and every school was going to have every kid proficient by the 2013, 14 school year. And so every year, you had to make what was called AYP, annual yearly progress toward that. This is the same thing, only now, they have taken away this hundred percent thing by some year, and instead what they've done is set a state benchmark, and the state's going to just set this benchmark. And then they're going to, they're going to see where you are, okay? And then they're going to see the distance between where you are now and where they want you to be. They're going to divide that up by five, and that becomes your measure of interim progress, that measure per year. Anywhere where you see fours, here's, let me just jump back here. Oops. See those fours right there? That means that we already exceeded the state five-year plan. So if you hit four, you're already done with your five years, you met your MIPs, and now you can just keep going. So anywhere where you're a three, you met your yearly MIP, and so you're fine. If you got a two, you didn't. So that's kind of where, that's kind of how it shakes out. So four, you met your five-year already. Three, you just met your measure of interim progress. Two, you didn't make your MIP, and so you need to sort of take a look at that. And that population that I was talking about in the student group of Chancellor, the students with disability, and the English language learners are struggling to meet that measure, which I wouldn't really be surprised by that given the profile of the kids there.
Do you want to ask your question? Do you have more questions?
Yeah, so, I don't know if anybody else has questions.
No, go ahead, Mel.
All right, so going back to the early slides on the proficiency.
What page?
Page two.
Oh, we have a page number.
One and two. Actually, three to ELA and three to eight math. So you mentioned a number of reasons why our scores are low. You know, refusals, changes in the test, changes in the curriculum, there's probably others. And we see that if we educate the students, by the time they get to high school, they do fine, relatively speaking. Do you think that if we continue to educate the children the same as we do now, and everything else stabilizes, like the tests, you know, they stop changing the test, they stop changing the curriculum, do you think we'd see an improvement in those scores? Because I have to say, if you look at, just look at the chart without knowing any of the other information, the scores don't look very good.
I understand that.
So, I mean, how do we fix that? How do we get, make it improve? Will it improve on its own if other things stabilize?
That is a fair question. And, you know, the only answer I have to that question is that during the NCLB years, because they sort of established the standards and then stuck with the plan over time, what we saw is our scores gradually increased such that we were always meeting our AYP and our benchmarks and our annual measurable objectives and making progress toward that proficiency goal. What happened to us since the board regents has kind of gone through this moment where they started changing things a lot, is just when we sort of get things readjusted, then we have to change it. And so part of the answer, I think, is how do we fix that? Is that now the state has settled on new math and English language art standards, they are rewriting tests against those new standards. We are going to get to see what those tests look like. It's going to be a little more transparent this time around, so we're going to be able to make necessary adjustments. What I'm hoping to be able to do, and I'm going to counsel people to continue to move in that direction, as they stabilize that, we can then go back to doing the stuff that we were doing during the NCLB years, which is, we can use that information for curricular improvement purposes. Perhaps we can do some curriculum rewriting around some of those standards where we see kids not doing well on particular items. I used to run really detailed item analysis and create item maps, and I would distribute them to all the teachers, but I'm sort of, and again, this is just a philosophical disposition on my part, I know I can be overly focused on teaching because it has, I don't want the state focused on teaching curriculum, and this isn't good practice. So if the state can kind of get their practice in line, that could bode well for us to start to see that, I think, jump back up. And to answer your first question, though, I don't think there's any guarantees that success remains. I think if you don't stay at it, I mean, it's a job that's never done, and I think you have to keep pushing it, and you have to keep analyzing it and looking at your services that are supporting kids, your practices in classrooms. There's no guarantees that our grad rate stays the same, and I think you've got to keep pushing it. So I don't think it's a good idea to sit back and assume that that's going to stay the story. I think that would be a mistake, and I'm certainly not saying that, I'm not saying that idea out loud anywhere, but at the same time, I have all those other conditions. I don't know if that.
Yeah.
Marvin, on that point, I mean, I look at a grade five, I mean, they're going up every year from fourteen, fifteen up to eighteen, nineteen, but if you look at grade seven, you know, fifty-six down to forty is a pretty significant drop over five years. I'd be curious if our neighboring district's seen those results as well, and if they did, then yeah, we can explain it away, but if not, maybe there's something we should be doing locally. Maybe we should look at some other districts and see where they're scoring in that particular grade.
Well, to that point, I just, I think we were talking about that curriculum meeting actually, last time. So I collected all the data from the county, and I'm putting it on a spreadsheet, and we're going to do some cross-grade level comparisons, and I'm also going to compare it across to our joint management team. I have a database that has all this data in it, so I'm going to take a look and see where those kinds of anomalies might exist and see if you may be right.
Marvin, could you send us that, Dad? I think we talked about that in the summer because, yeah, I mean, these numbers don't say a lot, but if we could compare with our neighbors, then, you know, everyone else is going through the same issue, test refusals, same, you know, same curriculum changes, all that. So that, to me, would be more, you know, it'd look like the SAT numbers, you could really kind of get a sense of where you are. Right, because if everybody in the county is still, you know, their numbers look similar to this, then we kind of would have a better sense of where we're at, so maybe you could just thought that'd be helpful. Okay.
We'll get the curriculum meeting opened up and I'll go through them.
No.
It shouldn't be too long. I mean, that guy's all kind of clumped into a spreadsheet, we should sort it out and sort of analyze it.
At least for me, I think that'd be helpful to, you know. Does anyone else have any questions?
So I know it's a little difficult to ask about what you're going to do in the future with this information, but you mentioned you want to pay attention to the areas of concern. So what does that mean, pay attention to those areas, and what would you do with the info? Understanding that since we haven't, since this is all kind of new and you haven't backed into it yet, you may not be able to say what you're going to do, but do you have some sense?
Historically, what we've done, paying attention, usually step one is, okay, so who are these kids? Do we know them? Are they quality of pracs? Are they getting the kind of services that they need? If they're showing up as frequent flowers on the absentee list, why? Is that kind of just noticing what's going on? And the cohorts are small enough, it's not hard to figure out who the kids are. So a lot of it is just me putting together stuff like this, only maybe identifying the kids and getting it to the principals and saying, you know, hey, could you guys take a look at that stuff? Or talking to Fern Lox in the elementary school when she's doing her RTI teams and say, you know, are any of these kids showing up on your RTI list? say, you know, are any of these kids showing up on your RTI list? Talking to social workers, like having them notice that we've got kids who are frequent flyers on the chronic absenteeism and to say, hey, could you guys give that a second look, what's going on? Something going on with that family? Is it? So it's that kind of thing, so that we can get a sense of the sort of, you know, fancy talk, you know, root causes of why this is happening before you start putting stuff in place to do something. So that's what I mean, sort of pay attention to.
Marvin, to follow up on that, so is there a set time that happens? And does that information get down to the teachers? Because they're going to be noticing a lot of those things you're looking for, I would think. You know, the teachers would be the place to go for that, whether it's through the principal or however. And, you know, at what time of year does that happen in order to make change? Or even just for, like I said, even for the teacher to notice, you know, absenteeism or how anything is playing a role?
Usually step one is, again, usually getting planned out with the principals, and then they sort of say, okay, send me all this stuff and break it up so that I can send it to X. So that's kind of how that happens at first. And then if people then say, you know what, could you guys understand this a little better? Then of course, I turn up and say, okay, so this is what you're looking at. This is the kids you're talking about. So I mean, that's usually the initial process. And then, once the patterning occurs where we think, oh my gosh, we got a pattern here, now we start doing more like strategic planning. Like, okay, we've got, do we have to look at the research? Do we have to look at some of the school districts that are doing something about this? And what can we do to respond to that? That's where we start marshaling different program options and things. That's usually the way it's been over the last, gosh, since the No Child Left Behind started. So this will be no different, really. Usually, I turn up at a faculty meeting and walk through this kind of stuff with them, maybe in a slightly different format, but similar to this stuff. So that's sort of how it gets rolled out.
Anybody else?
I guess, I just got caught by the rolling that out at a faculty meeting. How effective, like what changes end up happening as a result of teachers seeing at that level? It seems like just sort of information you go, oh, as a teacher. And then, I don't know what to do with that, you know?
Yeah, that's why we would get, it kind of would happen more after a lot of those other things happen. And they some.
Once you figure out if there are patterns and if there needs to be a strategic.
Yeah. And so I would be talking about the patterning underneath that. I would be talking about this high-level stuff that we do in public. We'd be talking about kids, packs, things that are going on in actual grade levels or whatever it might be, do more like that. And sometimes they get to that place, sometimes it's teams in the middle school. So it might not be a faculty meeting, it might just be seventh grade team says, you know what, responding to what Steve just said. You know, hey, could you guys, could you come talk to us about that? So I show up and my other team, so John and I both made up that team. So it's more like that, so we'll give a little more tailoring. We do some of this broadcasting, but not all of that.
I have another question, but it's kind of bigger picture than the presentation. And if you don't have an answer right now, that's fine, you can come back to the next or a future curriculum committee meeting. But I know you're always going to conferences and bigger things. I would love to hear what you're excited about bringing into the district. What ideas have you picked up that you think maybe could be implemented here? Yeah, really, what you're picking up that you think might apply here that is exciting to you?
Okay, well, it's probably a larger conversation. We could do that at the curriculum meeting and talk about what that might look like instead of this. But I can tell you some things that the state is doing right right now, that I think is very high-quality stuff that this school district needs to live into. And we're not doing it now, is the next-gen science standards. So bringing science education into that model is a critical thing that needs to happen going forward. But I would call that non-negotiable from my perspective. So I think we've got to live into that. We need to put some concrete plans in place to live in. I think a second area of importance that I'm pretty excited about also is that I think the state is getting this right also in the social studies standards, because they're looking at participatory readiness and civic readiness and through the process of teaching kids these things that are called inquiry arcs within the social studies strand, which is going to have the effect of having kids be able to, you know, think and operate like social scientists and historians, but also be prepared to participate as a member of civic society. And so they're pretty exciting standards, and they're pretty serious, too. And I think that's another one that if you're asking me to, you know, what I see as a non-negotiable, I don't think I need to say, well, that's a shocker. Right now is an important time to be civic-ready, participatory-ready, irrespective of where you fall on some spectrum. Just being aware of the complexity of American society from a political, social, economic, historical perspective is critical. And I think the social studies standards offer that. So this is not big, exciting stuff, but it's really serious, important work, I think. I also think that, I was at the, I think I mentioned this over the summer, maybe. I went to the Hiski Conference in Philadelphia this last year, and I was pretty like, have you ever been to one of these things? It was about 20, 25,000 people there, vendors from all over the world. So it was high-end tech from all over the place. So I went to a few, what I thought were key workshops that might pertain to K-12. Not that there were two things in technology that I think are going on, other than the normal stuff like automation and robotics and things like that, which I think are important things to keep in our STEM program. But the two things were teaching kids systematically algorithmic thinking and how that flows its way through every aspect of coding and talking to machines. It was algorithmic thinking, kind of, how shall we say? It's sort of like the lingua franca basis for how things are done now, which then bleeds into the next thing, which I went to this presentation with this guy, I wish I could remember this guy's name. He's a mathematician at Carnegie Mellon, and he's one of the guys that worked on complex math for artificial intelligence. And he has worked with a consortia of people nationally to create what are called artificial intelligence standards for K-12, believe it or not. And so he was arguing, and I thought quite persuasively, that this stuff needs to be built into schools, because kids need to be able to think algorithmically, and they also need to understand how artificial intelligence is operating. So that they are conversant in that way of thinking as well, so they understand, not just be a part of it, but also be conversant. And he committed a pretty strong argument that the United States in general, so it's not peculiar to here, it's the whole country, is way behind on this subject, as a matter of fact, probably five or 10 years ago. There are countries, Israel, Russia, China, and two of the former Soviet bloc, let's say Belarus and Latvia, who teach AI and algorithmic thinking in K-12 in their schools. So I think that's a critical thing. It's kind of new, and it's going to take time to build it into an American system. But I was pretty excited about that, because it kind of opened my eyes to the importance of it. So I've been poking around at that, asking about it, seeing how that works. I'd say those are three things that I'm pretty excited and interested about from a curriculum point of view, other than the other areas, which I think we have to just, you know, math, English language arts, stuff like that, that's just part of the work we're going to stay at, that's the learn, you're done file, I think. I'd like to go off, but I think it gives you an idea of some things that I'm thinking about.
Thank you.
Marvin, I had two questions. I just wanted to go back for a minute to the conversation about the areas of concern, just the process. So you give the information to the principals, and then they disseminate it to the staff, and then it's up to the teachers to either ask follow-up questions or ask you to come and explain it? Is that, is that pretty much the process? Or am I missing a?
Yeah, I would say it's messy, I don't think it's straightforward like that. I think it's more where, so pick something, chronic absenteeism. It may be that we look at that list and we say, okay, let's look at who those kids are that caused that to be in the level one area out of that sub-population. So now we identify that that's a certain sub-population. That may be that the principal and the assistant principal and the social worker might take a look at that work and say, oh, we need to do a better job connecting with those families. Could be as simple as that, as a starter. So it may not be straightforward, just what are they going to do? It might be, now that would go into a planning process and putting some things in place that we would try to do something about whatever the issue is. So I think this first step is identifying the, who it is noticing, and then try to get a sense of causality so that you can get the right view and analysis working on that. So if they need the teachers, they know, it depends on kind of what it is really.
Right, okay. I had one other question. Looking at the slide about the postgraduate college plans, so the last two years, it looks like, if I'm reading this right, that we have, basically we have less kids going to college. So, I mean, obviously, it could be they're going into the military, it could be other reasons, but do you have any sense, like, why that number's going down? Is it, is there any, I mean, like I said, it could be just more kids going to the military or going into the workforce, but I'm just wondering if there's any, you know, I mean, it does dip down a good amount, from the 90s into the lower, the upper 80s, but.
I couldn't tell you all. I think the, part of the impetus for us sort of pushing toward, kind of, the kind of collective sense that we need to do this, to bring this Naviance platform on and start working on things like that, is being a little more proactive about our planning for post-high school. And so I think we're not quite sure what that. I understand, I could, maybe Dr. Davenport could or the guidance counselors could do a better job, and I'll walk back to them after this conversation. But that's, we're kind of trying to be proactive about that, to get a better sense of how these kids are planning and engaging them and their families in that process in a better way, putting better resources in front of them so that they have a better, broader range of choices.
Right, because this doesn't count like technical, trade, any type of trade school or anything like that either. Okay. Anybody else, anything else? Thank you for being here. All right. So the next is, as usual, Board of Education Obligations under New York Law, Section 1125.
Yeah. This is a rewind to every year for the last 10 years or so. It's at your places. It's on item 4.4. I'm not going to sit here and read the entire thing to you, because actually, the only things that are applied to you as board members are pages one and two. And it is generally speaking, an opportunity to remind members of the Board of Education that they have a duty under education law to report any instance of, let's see how they define, any instance of abuse by an employer or volunteer in an educational setting that may have come to your attention, okay? And the wheres and the wherefores are outlined, especially on page two. But if you become privy to some information regarding abuse by an employer or volunteer in an educational setting, not in the home, that's a whole different ball of wax in terms of your reporting obligations as Board of Education members. But if you're having coffee at Brett Alone and somebody mentions to you, yeah, I heard such-and-such happened to a kid during fifth period lunch period or whatever, then you have an affirmative obligation to contact me or somebody in a position of responsibility so that we can follow through. May turn out to be nothing, but that does not absolve you as a board member or any of these other members of the school community, school nurse, teacher, guidance counselor, psychologist, social worker, school administrator, school board member, or other school personnel to report it. And then it's up to us to follow through on it, not you. That's then, it's in our lap, we have an obligation to follow through. So I mean, it's really, I'm not saying it's an easy thing to grapple with, but your obligation is pretty straightforward, you know? Here's something, say something to me or building principal or somebody in a position of responsibility in the school district, then you've done your due diligence, and it's up to us to follow through.
So this would be a little different than if someone tells us something, and we might refer them back to the proper people to, you know, the work, the chain of command. If we were to be told something, we would immediately, we might tell them to do that also, but we would also be obligated to.
This has nothing to do with chain of command. This is, just like, in a different context, school personnel, not board members necessarily, but school personnel have an obligation to report to the child abuse hotline if they hear about something that may be happening in the home or outside of school. Some of us still have an obligation to report those. This is specific to abuse in an educational setting, on a school bus, in the cafeteria, on an athletic field, in a locker room, wherever, that's your specific responsibility. There are other mandated reporting requirements for staff members, not school board members. This is the one that intersects with your role as a school board member. Okay? Guys, just, we go through this every year, just so, basically as a result of the recommendation of legal counsel, that we have gone on record that you have been informed slash reminded of your responsibility. That's all.
Okay. Any questions? Pretty clear? Moving on to, where are we?
Board Committee?
Board Committee Reports. The first LRP, that one is mine. So this is from November 13. We reviewed some updated five-year enrollment projection information for Chancellor, and the data clearly shows in K through four, three sections, and there's four sections and a self-contained class in fifth grade. We did talk about as those move into the middle school, what we've seen in the past is typically kids move in and out, and we get a lot more kids in in the middle school. But looking at the numbers, even if there were 10 additional kids that moved into each grade, it would still look like three sections. And then that doesn't seem to change, as our kindergarten numbers, as you know, are 41 at this point. We also talked about that the teachers, currently in the middle school, they teach five sections, and there'll be three sections coming in. What else? We looked at the master schedule in all three buildings, and then we talked about our listening session. We're going to, the committee is going to be taking the show on the road, so to speak, going to have an afternoon at both for the high school, middle school, and Chancellor, where the staff would have an opportunity to come and talk to the committee about long-range planning and their thoughts on that. So that would be an opportunity for us to hear from them. So that date is being worked on, and that's it.
And the plan there is to put some information out to staff before that, so they come with at least some information and not just coming with no idea what we're.
Right, a little bit of information about what, you know, why we.
Yeah, to give them a context for giving the board members their feedback.
Any questions on the long-range planning? All right. So I guess I'll just stay with long-range planning.
Okay, yeah. So at our next meeting on November 19th, we talked about what our goals would be for the listening sessions with the staff, and what information we would want to go out to them ahead of time to prepare them and help them come up with questions or things that they would want to share with us. So that list of what we wanted to convey ahead of time included when and why the long-range planning committee was created, some visuals, various graphs showing student enrollment over the last five years, 10 years, and projecting. over the last five years, 10 years, and projecting into the future three to five years by building and for the whole district, looking at total employees over the last 10 years, looking at per pupil spending over the last 10 years, also looking at salaries and benefits in proportion to the full budget, as well as a short description of how the tax cap impacts how much revenue we can raise, and just setting that context of if we're limited to raising taxes approximately 2%, but salaries, benefits, utilities, and other big expenses go up by more than 2%, we can't continue cutting other expenses indefinitely. So we wanted to come up with a long-range plan to deal with that challenge. So once that background is provided, we really hope the listening sessions will be that. They'll be listening to, to what the staff has to say. It's not us presenting this information. And, and then separately, Joe, oh, also importantly, we want to focus on asking for ideas of how to innovate and restructure our resources to the best effect. And separately, Joe reported that he has set up individual meetings with each of the principals to hear their separate ideas for long-range planning. And our next meeting is November 3rd.
December.
December, yeah.
December 3rd.
I don't even know if that's right, actually. I might not have updated that. Nobody caught that?
No.
I didn't catch that.
Nobody caught that.
Nobody caught that.
I did not edit that line from previous copy and paste.
That's what happens, we meet every week.
Yes. So I don't know what the next meeting is.
It is December 3rd.
It is December 3rd? Okay. And I just left agenda blank.
Any questions for long-range planning number two? Okay. We'll move on to communication.
On November 4th, we continue to review some of the things we hadn't reviewed last month. The district brochure was reviewed and revised. We're working on tightening up the text, and we're looking for a school slogan or tagline for the brochure for the school. We continue to review the comprehensive communication plan. This is a plan that was requested many years ago as a guidance document, and it's just a means to communicate with the school and community. It lists our goals, our accomplishments, and we will continue to revise this document and we will, we'll see what we've actually done and what more needs to be done. And then the, we, we continue to work on the district website to keep it clean and neat and easy to find things. So there was information regarding the school start change time. It was explaining it back when it was being implemented, and we're just going to take it off the website because it's been implemented for a few years now, so there's no need to explain it. There's also going to be a parent-guided instructions-to-use canvas so that parents could see that it's there and how to use it. Naviance has been added under the Families tab. This is a joint account between the parents and the students, so the students need to share their account information with the parents. And we also looked at the district page as opposed to all the homepage, school homepages, you know, the Chancellor, middle school pages, and we're going to make them look the same. So right now, something like, like us on Facebook is not on the individual school pages. It's going to be added. And finally, we wanted to recognize our donors. This year, that will take place in January. Moving forward, we'd like to do it in October at the start of the year to recognize our donors from last year, and our, that will be modeled after their retirement acknowledgement. And our next meeting is December 12th.
Any questions for communication? I have two questions. So the district brochure, so this has been, been working on this for, we've been working on it for a while. I'm wondering how close it is to being done or if it's still in very rough...
It is done. It's just a little wordy, and we wanted to clean it up to make it look clean and neat and easy to read, so...
It's being polished now.
It's being polished, yeah. The information is there. We just wanted to look, I think the committee would like it to just look a little cleaner.
So what do we think this will be, like, early...
I think we need a little more time with it.
End of the winter, early...
I would, I would think so. I mean, every, every meeting, we're making some...
A little bit of...
Yeah, yeah.
I'd say three more committee meetings.
Which puts it about that.
February-ish. Yeah, I mean, we'd like a slogan. That's, that was, that's a little bit of a sticky point.
What's that again?
The slogan.
Oh, yeah.
Ask for help on Facebook.
Yeah, maybe should ask for help on Facebook or Twitter.
We could have those school conferences. The winner gets...
Got lots of creative people out there.
A hundred brochures. To do what you wish.
We get the satisfaction of having their slogan used.
Yeah.
Couldn't hurt, it couldn't hurt. And then, oh, not another question, just I'm glad we're going to be recognizing our donors. We have such a generous community, so that'll be nice. Thanks for putting that together. Facilities.
So we met last Thursday, and basically went over what happened at the, the meeting from the week before between the district contractors and architects. So the major point was that the site work contract has been signed, and the kickoff meeting will be held in about two weeks, which is...
It was canceled.
It was canceled.
Well, they can't do anything outside right now.
We'll be getting to that eventually. We expect the work to be, work done in the spring, so there's time for that, I guess. The completed work, about 30% of the project is completed. You can see there, there's a whole list of projects that are finished. We have a lot of upcoming work, so that's about 70% of the project still to be done over the next, hopefully next spring, summer, and fall. Dumber projects, so a lot of things are being scheduled, talked about. So I think, for example, the locker refurbishment at Chancellor was thought to be done over the winter break. However, there is a concern about odor or fumes from the painting, so they decided to push that off till the spring when windows can be open to kind of dissipate the odors. There's still some items being bid, like ladders and skylights, asphalt shingles. The major project for next summer is the window walls at Chancellor. There may need to be some work done either in the spring before school ends or in the fall after school starts, or both. So it may be necessary to move some classes around so that work can be done during the school year. There is space at Chancellor, so if we have to move a few classes around to get work done, it can be done. Kitchen renovations at this building will be done over the summer. There's some plumbing work that's still to be done that relate to that. The ventilation work here in this building is close to finished, I believe.
It's close.
And then there's punch list items that have to be scheduled. Couple of concerns, there's chimney work here at this building. They're talking about installing a sleeve inside the chimney so that, to protect the structure of the chimney. There's a door, there's a concern over the way the door swings that might have, need to be reversed so that it's better to open and close the door in the pump vault. There's an odor in the guidance department. There's still work ongoing to try to figure out the cause. They've taken air samples and tried to determine the cause and makeup of the odor, but they haven't been able to draw any conclusions. We're talking about maybe moving the guidance people out of there until we can figure out where the odor's coming from. Still waiting on pricing for new lockers, and there's some drain piping that was discovered that may need to be replaced, so there'll probably be a change order coming through for that. The project, good news is that the completed work is $144,000 under budget, and there's still approximately $1.3 million in contingency and incidental funds that are remaining of the approximately $2.5 million that was budgeted. Our next meeting is December 19th, and we will be discussing the continuity of operations plan.
Questions for facility? Mark, is the, the guidance, the issue in the guidance, is that from the construction work or is it just something that popped up? Is it...
Seems to have come up after the work was done over the summer, and they have not been able to determine. They thought maybe it was ceiling tiles, carpeting, adhesive, something, but there's no conclusion that they've been able to draw from air samples that have been taken about what might be making up the smell, so...
All the air samples indicate no, no level of VOCs.
Nothing dangerous.
No, no, nothing dangerous. That's, that's, that seems to be the case, and we brought in some other PVS. BOCs did the sampling on three separate occasions under three different set of circumstances. Ventilated room, closed up room over the weekend, and so now we've got the...
Quest.
Yeah, Quest is, is in to see if they can find out what the cause of the smell is.
It's something they do all the time.
It's weird, it's weird, but it is, so...
Poor people. That's unfortunate. Well, I'm sure you guys will take care of it.
We are working on it.
Any other, any other questions? Okay. Moving on. Good news? Have any good news?
Other than what we already talked about?
I'll just add to the sports thing. We had another swimmer, Brooke Prochaz, who was a sophomore, went to States as well. She was seeded 35th, I think, in the 50 free, came in 34th, so pretty good achievement for a sophomore for a couple more years. I'm sure she'll, she'll get up there.
That's great. That's really, that's great.
Now we just had a touch of the modified basketball program is off to a good start. They have a lot of kids participate in that. It's a good way to maybe start to rebuild the program there, so very positive.
That's exciting. And for those maybe that didn't pay attention, so we have two modified boys and two modified girls basketball teams. So that's, it's a great, it's a great thing.
As a result of that, we were not, it was not necessary to cut anybody from either of those two programs.
So anyone who wants to give it a shot has an opportunity to do it, which is pretty cool.
I had the opportunity to go to the talent show, and what a talented bunch of kids we have. It was excellent. Lot of different talents. And then we also, I guess we had it the last time, but we didn't mention it, the, this year's first edition, print edition of the high school newspaper is out, so we all got it in our, we got it last week, but hopefully everyone gets out and, and reads it.
That was great production of Almost Maine by the...
Oh, yes.
By the Fall Drama Club.
Yes.
Last Saturday, maybe, it was really pretty well done.
I didn't get to see it. I heard it was, I heard it was very good, though.
It was.
Yeah.
And we have band, winter band concerts coming up here in December. I couldn't rattle off the dates for you in the back of my head, but yeah, they're coming right up. The 12th and...
Yeah, there's a couple.
It's not in there.
Yeah, it is.
17th is one, I think.
Yeah, 17th is one. I think the floor is for them.
And the CLS is on December 10th.
Oh, they're there, they're in the back.
Yep, they're on there.
Lots of great things going on.
Yeah.
Whitney knew where they were exactly. Any old business?
I don't.
Any? Another opportunity for public comment?
I'm going to off this, just to get that speaker out here, because I would hate to interrupt the normal flow of conversation. Business does much better than the normal flow. So if you could leave that speaker out here, just turn it up so you're not getting feedback on your mic, then I could carry you off.
We'll take that under advisement, right, Whitney? Okay.
Okay, thank you. And any other?
I don't.
I, I don't have, I don't have any other. All right, we're ready to move on to our action items. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. And I just, we have several donations here, so I just always want to point out how generous our community is and thank them for their support. We have PTSO and the Science Foundation on this one. Did we vote on that? Did we vote?
Yes.
We did, sorry. Distracted myself. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Peter Contrati, Contrati, to the civil service position of athletic trainer assigned to the Buckley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School, effective January 4th, 2020, at a salary of Step 6, $46,371 prorated with a 26-week probation period.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a modification of the leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Cassie Wintermantle, having commenced on August 29th, 2019, and thereafter extending to December 31st, 2019, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave. Such leave period now to be extended through March 31st, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Amanda Smeeds as long-term substitute in the position of AIS reading teacher at the Buckley Middle School, effective December 2nd, 2019, until December 20th, 2019, at the pleasure of the board in accordance with the non-unit salaries for 2019-20. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Irina Jordan, AIS reading teacher at the Buckley Middle School.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the appointment of Iris Haddock as leave replacement in the position of school psychologist at the Buckley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School, effective September 17th, 2019 through December 31st, 2019, at the pleasure of the board with salary of $350 per diem in accordance with Board Policy 9410, instructional substitute compensation and the non-unit salaries for 2019-20. Such leave appointment extension now to be extended effective November 8th, 2019 through March 31st, 2019, at a salary of Step 1, MA plus 30, $63,945 prorated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2019-20. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Cassie Wintermantle, school psychologist at Buckley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School.
So move.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a modification of the leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Kimberly Sneed, having commenced on September 17th, 2019 through October 24th, 2019, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave. Such leave period now to be extended through November 20th, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the appointment of Cheryl Lacour as a leave replacement in the position of teaching assistant at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 18th, 2019 through October 24th, 2019, at the pleasure of the board with a salary of Step 24, BA plus 5, $52,155 prorated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2019-20. Such leave appointment now to be extended through November 20th, 2019. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Kimberly Sneed, teaching assistant at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. I still have nothing, I have nothing.
Yeah, you do want.
It's not a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor.
I know.
Happy Thanksgiving.